All right, the September 6th meeting of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. This is a reminder that we're broadcasting live and will be taped for future broadcasts. First item of business is approval of minutes from August 23rd. And I think we were all here for that. No, Mark was not. That's right. So everybody but Mark can vote on these. I'm assuming we all had a chance to read them. Any corrections, amendments?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 23rd as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we'll move to public comment. And seeing none. We're actually going to go a little bit out of order. I thought we'd start with the RHS trip to Spain, because that sounds very exciting. You know what, we've left something out here, though. We have a new member here. So Superintendent Branco, would you like to introduce them?
So we have Anna Drost with us tonight. And we'll talk a little bit more about this later on, but there's some leadership work being done at the high school that Principal Rose is working on with the student leaders. And so I think we're going to be looking at some rotational model eventually, so that more students get an opportunity to sit at the table, to represent their peers, learn about government and practice. So we're very happy to have you with us tonight. And we know you're going to give us a great update when it's your turn. So welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Anna.
So when you're ready to go, you're going to just press that button and turn the light on on your mic. We'll turn ours off, and then you're ready to go. Introduce yourselves and take it away.
Hello, hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Mr. O'Brien. I'm the high school art teacher. This year, I'm also the yearbook advisor, read Rockport and Races Diversity. And then I'm also doing this great trip to Spain with Lil Duffy. This will be our third trip together, so we're looking forward to it. So this year, we actually are going to try a different part of Spain. So we have previously gone to Spain together. We did Madrid up to Barcelona, and we kind of hung up, hung around in Bilbao, and then kind of made our way back down. This time, we're going south. So we're looking forward to this. We have 18 students. We had them put their deposit in at the very end of last year, so that I could kind of do some planning over the years or over the summer to get ready for this year. So if you want to go to the next slide. Our whole trip, we started off in Madrid, and we're basically going to do some city tours like we've done. We have a great tour guide. We got assigned him over the summer, so I've been in contact with him. He's very much looking forward to this trip. The students will get to participate. We do have some cultural things for them to do. We do have a dancing night, so they will learn the flamenco. I will try. I'm not a dancer. I do art. But we will be going to art museums, and then the students will have some free time in the plazas to do some shopping and things like that. If you want to go on to the next slide for me. We do make our way down to Granada. We did add that Alhambra guided visit. And then we are going to end with Sevilla and then up to Madrid. The whole thing is going to be six hotel stays, airfare included. So if you want to go to my next slide, all the guided tours will be included. Museum admissions and all of that. We do ask the students that they bring a little bit of spending money for themselves. Students like to bring those trinkets home for their families. We do encourage that. It's a chance for them to kind of use their Spanish, to kind of do a little talking. For those of you that don't know, I do have some Spanish background, so this Spain trip is going to be fun for me. I was a Spanish major in undergrad. So it's just a chance for me to practice. And then I do have Lil. So Lil is my go-to. She does everything.
There's something else missing?
What?
And I was his teacher.
Spanish teacher. Oh, I didn't know if we wanted to go that. Yes, Lil was my senior Spanish teacher as well when I was a student here, so.
There's two meals included in that, right?
Yes, they're also meals included. They also are preparing us a meal, so that will get kind of interesting. Last year was great. I got a vegan paella. It was great.
Wow.
I did not.
But it was a really great opportunity for the kids to get into the kitchen and kind of try cooking the local cuisine while also enjoying it. If you want to go to the next slide. I am excited. It came out a little blurry. The Alhambra is going to be really exciting for the students. They are going to do kind of like a whole discussion day there with the guide. They're going to play different roles. I have made it a little bit shorter. It was supposed to be like a very extensive. We are making it a little bit shorter to kind of allow for the kids to also have time to explore the gardens, because they are quite extensive. So they are going to have to walk a lot that day. But we are looking forward to that part. We were able to add that just based on the numbers that we had at the original deposit. So it's looking good. We do have the 18, as I said. We think that's a perfect number for us to go. As Lil puts it, we don't have to wait for everybody to eat and wait for everybody to do everything else. Get through everything much quicker and enjoy kind of all the festivities. Does anybody have questions? I did pass around a more detailed itinerary. We are going with Explorica, for those of you that know World Strides. It's kind of like a sister company of theirs. I did include their information, just in case anybody wants to reach out. It's also on the itinerary as well. The great thing about working with World Strides, we did them for the last two trips. They do make sure that we're kind of like not spending our time traveling, that we're kind of enjoying everything. We're not just.
More centrally located.
Yes, exactly. So we do appreciate that. We've heard of other places where it is a lot more of just like training in, subwaying around. We do look out on it. We will be very centrally located to a lot of the main attractions.
So I think, in addition to yourselves, are there any other chaperones? I think you're within.
At this point, we're, yeah, at this point, we're within the requirements. We do have, it's coed, so we do have a mix of students, so that's great for us. And I think that's why we want to kind of cap it at 18. I think it's kind of like a good number. I know that there have been larger trips. I have not been a part of those, but I like kind of like a smaller group. They get to kind of explore the museums a little bit more intimately, and it's not like a large crowd. Students can really just kind of delve into the culture versus feeling like they're an amorphous group kind of wandering around. So I'm very much looking forward to this.
Yeah, it looks like a wonderful trip, just the itinerary and the map. And I know they certainly set a high bar after the Italy trip, but it sounds like you'll be able to.
True, very true.
Hop right over it.
But I think for the ones that didn't make it to Italy, I think they're going to, I think they're going to have a good, a good alternative.
Excellent. Now, are you seeking, I don't recall if we've seen the.
I think we have.
Formal request?
Yeah.
I think we did last week.
Okay, so.
We proved it already?
Yeah, so it's a change of the Mexico. So Mexico, I kind of nixed because of some of the more like gang violence and things in the area that we were supposed to. So Explorica was really great. They were like, well, why don't we just take all the things and we'll just move you into this new trip, and you can do a new recruitment. And I was like, I like that. I really do like that, because the Mexico thing just never was going to pan out for me. I just never saw it as like an impossible trip at this time, so.
It might make sense to take a motion on this one. That's, I think that's why.
I think so, because same agency, which is reassuring, but different location.
I have just one question. I, I think about what might happen if COVID comes roaring back. And can you tell us a little bit about the conversations you've had with students around trip insurance?
So I do encourage them to do the trip insurance. I think at this point, most of them have actually gone in that route. I think I have a couple that signed up over the summer. And so I was like, didn't have a chance to have that conversation with them. I do have a meeting with them, and the parents are going to come a little bit before the open house, so I'll have that conversation with them. So it's, it is up to them. I do encourage it. The company also encourages it. So sometimes when they don't. But it is definitely something that we have encouraged on previous trips as well.
Most of the students have always chosen, or their parents have chosen them, to, you know, get the insurance. There have been a couple where it has happened where they didn't, and sadly, they lost a lot of money. But we do definitely encourage the added insurance.
And if a student on the trip is diagnosed with COVID, will they be quarantined, and will one of you have to stay behind with that student? I ask only because groups going right now might expect to see those kinds of restrictions. I wonder if that's something, you don't need to have an answer for me, but I just, I wonder about that.
Explorica hasn't given any language on it yet. It's something that I can definitely reach out to my consultant about, just so that we have some sort of verbiage, if you will. But they have not kind of gone in that communication yet. So yeah, exactly. So fingers crossed. But I will reach out and just say, you know, what is the kind of protocol? I think it's, they're probably going to ask for me to talk to my tour guide in Spain, because I'm pretty sure it'll be more country-specific. So I will reach out to the new tour guide that I've been assigned, so I can kind of get like a more round, full kind of picture on what they're kind of providing.
And then I just want to piggyback on one of Amy's questions, although slightly different. In the unlikely event that a student or students would have to be escorted back to the United States prematurely, is the thought that the tour guides plus one of you would be on site, and one would come back with them? Or have you thought about that, or is there a?
I think it states clearly that the student goes alone.
Correct. So I think my responsibility would be get them to the airport and get them to security. But at that point, I think it's the student.
Okay.
Who would be responsible for getting home.
That's correct, and that's communicated to the parents at the time that they signed up for the trip, as far as I understand it, too.
That's what I thought.
Good, good answer. Any other questions or concerns?
We'd also like to point out, in the three or however many trips that I've done prior without working with Mr. O'Brien, we've never had to send anyone home.
Not gone away.
Right.
And based on the group that we've seen, I'm very much looking forward to this group.
Yeah, it's a good group.
Yep, that's great.
You'd want to go, too.
We do. We're trying to figure out how to.
That's why we asked those chaperones.
Right.
I think that's what Amy was going.
How we could win her way in there.
Oh, okay. She snuck that in there well.
I took Spanish in college. I could be of help, just saying. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the trip to Spain for April 12th through 19th as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great time.
Thank you. I'm sure you'll be seeing photos.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, you'll be doing it.
Yeah, the follow-up, you know.
The follow-up, that's right. Thank you. Well, we have a lot of principals in the room. All the principals that we have are here, which means.
Must be.
Either one of us is retiring, or. Or it's an opening day report.
Come on up.
Hello, I'm Amy Waterman, the elementary principal. Back for my second year, what I hope to be many. We, I think this is only day four, five, four, that we've been in school, but I still have a few things to report. Last week, we welcomed our incoming pre-K and kindergarten students for like an orientation with their families, which went really well. And then we welcomed our first through fifth graders last week for two full days, and then back this week. Only one student, we sort of had to pry away from his mother, which I thought was pretty good compared to past years. So, and he had a wonderful day today. So we have all grades, pre-K through grade five in full force. And it's nice to have bodies in the building and children laughing and smiling and happy to be there, so. Some of the photos that I chose to share with Dr. Branco. We have our fifth grade Fos science in action outside. They were working on one of their first lessons, because fifth grade is one of the grades to have implemented Fos just this year. So they're working on the position of the sun throughout the day and shadows. So they're out on the track in different spaces around the property, measuring all sorts of things, but drawing their shadows in the morning and then again in the afternoon. So it was nice to see them. Fos is going to be a really great program for them. We have first grade, Mrs. Weinbeek is a brand-new teacher. She graduated from Gordon in the spring and had some great training from one of the schools in Beverly that I worked at. And so she was in excellent hands there, and she's been a wonderful addition to our staff. Comes to us with some questions, and she's very innovative and just jumped right in full force. So I feel very lucky to have her. We have first graders. They made crowns that said, "I rocked the first day of school", and they wore those around the first day very proudly. They're, they're just a great bunch of kids. Most of them are returning from, had attended kindergarten here, so their faces are familiar, and they came in very excited to meet their new teachers, and officially be out of kindergarten. We have Mrs. Noddy's fifth-grade class. Some of our classrooms upstairs, two classrooms in fifth grade had the carpet removed and actually all the tiles, so they have all fresh new tiles. So they're kind of showing it off there with their new rug as well. And then the other classrooms in the upstairs and downstairs in that one wing had the carpet that was in the back of the room all removed and new tiles laid down. So our staff is extremely appreciative of that, because it was getting a little gross in there. And then one other picture, our preschool excitement. We had some returning students and some new students, and it was nice to see them recognize each other, those who were returning from last year, and get excited to meet their new teachers. A few other quick things. We have the, we've adjusted the bus time in the morning to come about five minutes earlier, which allows our students to have more time to actually eat breakfast in the cafeteria. Last year, Jody, the assistant principal, and I felt that kids were rushing in off the bus, sometimes late, grabbing their breakfast and then heading to class, missing part of morning meeting, and not able to sit in a circle that we really wanted them to. So the buses, the drivers have been very accommodating, and they're getting the kids to school. Enough, I guess, early enough that they are able to have breakfast, finish it, and then get to homeroom by nine o'clock when the bell rings and participate in that important start of the day. In the bottom, there's a picture of all our morning arrival students. We had an influx of them for about five minutes before the bell rings. Most of them are getting breakfast. Others are just having conversation with staff that have volunteered some extra days to be out there to help support them. So that's been working really well. And then, of course, we have Luna, the comfort dog. She's been out greeting the students at the beginning of the day, and then Officer Anderson walks her around throughout the school into different classrooms, and she's been wonderful. It's really a special addition, I think, for our kids. Even as she walks by, Mike will stop in the door, and the kids will wave and say, "Hi, Luna. Good morning, Luna." It's really precious, and she's brought comfort to the staff as well, so that's important. But we've had a great few days. We've got some new staff that are wonderful addition. They've kind of just slid into their roles and been asking good questions. And so far, they seem to feel supported and having what they need in the moment. So we're very grateful for how the year has started and hope it continues to move nice and smooth.
Questions, sir?
That's fabulous.
Thank you, Amy.
Mr. Rodman. Good evening. I am Jeff Rodman. I'm the interim principal at the middle school. And just a brief overview of our opening. It was a really positive, nice opening. We welcomed about 175 students, and I believe we're up to nine new students. We had two new students come in, one yesterday and one more today. So we're very excited about that. Students were really energetic, great middle school group. The start of the day, welcoming students that are coming in off the buses. And at the end of the day, when students are dismissed, has gone very, very well. And right now, everything in between has been nice. So we have some pictures of students who are coming into school. It's actually the second day, because the weather was much nicer. On that Wednesday. But just as Amy was saying, the addition of the comfort dog has been so awesome. And Mike regularly takes Luna around the building at different times when students are in the hallway. And she is just a magnet and has been a nice, nice addition. In addition to Luna, you know, we have, as we, we have new furniture in our science rooms. Hopefully, we'll all be in by this week. We have new tables and chairs in the three-science classrooms plus our STEM lab. And, you know, our rooms were in need of an upgrade. And we're doing some work in our math classes and adding some whiteboards so students can do more work and movement around, and getting students up has really been nice. But I am really, really pleased with the staff that we have brought on this year. And I would like to just, can I mention their names? We have Janessa Christensen, Para. Josh Hunt is our new science teacher in the seventh grade. Jonathan Clayman is the school psychologist. Logan LaRue is our new band person. Adam Redden is a BCBA that we, it's a K to eight position. And Tom Smoker is our chorus, general music, that we share Logan and Tom with the high school. And what the addition of Tom has allowed us to do is to offer a general music class, which is a great addition. We had students who were coming through six to eight that if they were in band or chorus, that was the only offering that we had for music. And now all of our students in all three grades will have the opportunity to participate in some type of music class. So we think that's a great addition for us. Anna Scott is our health teacher that we share with the high school. And Darlene Story is a paraprofessional working with our BCBA, with our student support. So it has been a really, really nice start. Again, 178 enthusiastic students entered the school. And I really would like to thank Kirk and his crew, as they did an amazing job getting the school ready. And what used to be, I think, was a computer lab downstairs is now we have split up into three office spaces, a team chair office, a conference room, and our professional development room. And it has allowed us to move Ms. Douglas, our counselor, into the main office area. And again, the STEM labs look great, but if you have a chance to come and take a tour, particularly of those three new offices, they have really added, you know, just a real need, is that we did not have a conference space. And that when we have meetings with parents and families, you know, everybody was crowded on top of one another. And this is, it's really been, it's really been nice to have. So thank to Kirk and his crew for the work that they did this summer.
I'm going to go back one slide. I think I want to point out on the bottom left there, is that Carolyn Teague's room? Is that what I'm looking at?
Carolyn Teague, yes.
Yeah, so sixth grade, as I, just before kids came in a couple days earlier, as I walked around and wanted to check out all the facilities, she was in that room. The whiteboards had gotten hung. And she's one, one example of many, many, many of our staff members who take professional development over the summer, who take courses, go to workshops, and come back rejuvenated, ready to implement. And she was really, really happy to tell me about the professional development and the studies out there around how, when students work standing up at whiteboards in a math classroom, where they can instantly erase, they are more apt to try math and to take risks and challenges. And so she embraced it. She wrapped the room in whiteboards. It's fascinating. And just, she's just one of, you know, as my grandmother would say, umpteen examples of, of great professional staff members who spend quality time in the summer prepping for the students every year. So I just want to hyper-focus on her as a good example out of that slide. Thank you.
Exciting. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Rose.
So for those of you who don't know me, Amy Rose, the high school principal. I love the start of the school year. It's so hopeful and exciting, and it was great to, we always get to kick off really the week before with the senior cruise, which we have a picture of, which is one of my favorite things, because we get to see the students and the families in a really informal, fun way. Usually, there's some dancing and karaoke. This group, you know, they did, they did pretty well. And Dr. Branco came, too. So we start off with the senior cruise, and the week before, we also do a freshman orientation. This year, we brought in some more interactive ways to work with the kids, because we found that, you know, times have changed. And when we originally did it, you know, you communicate all this information that they need, but really, we can email them that kind of stuff. So we really tried to focus on building relationships, working together as a freshman class, and what that's going to look like as they head into, you know, leadership roles at the high school and what they want to do after high school. So, and a lot of the parents came, too, which was great. It's, it's really geared towards the students, and we say that to the parents. But a lot of them stayed in the back and sort of listened and watched. And I think it's, you forget what a huge transition that is for a parent, where, you know, in eighth grade, it's, it's your baby, it's your child. And then into ninth grade, we start talking about, you know, getting them ready to leave high school. So we started having those conversations last week. This week, we, the seniors kicked off the first day with a breakfast at Sandy Bay Yacht Club. And then we just jumped right into the first day of school, which was great. We have a new, a bit of a new team in terms of we have a new assistant principal at the high school in Amanda King. And Anne Marie has transitioned to the six-through-12 team chairperson role. So, you know, it's been a little bit of an adjustment there with a new team, all wonderful moves with amazing people in place who are doing fantastic things. And I know Anne Marie is going to be phenomenal in her six-through-12 team chair role. She's already really got us up and running with a lot of the sped staffing, schedules, you know, all the logistical things of welcoming new students on IEPs. She's been amazing with that. And Amanda's jumped right into the assistant principal role, doing what she does best, which is, you know, connecting with kids and getting students in the door and just really trying to make it feel like a warm and welcome place, which has been great. Our fall sports are up and running, which is wonderful. We had a couple wins last night with the field hockey. I think it was six to one. And the boys' soccer, three to two. And then I was at the girls' game. They lost five to one. But they played phenomenally and were, you know, really came back in the second half, which was awesome to see, some smiling faces even through a loss. Next slide. So doesn't do it complete justice with the picture of the STEM space, because there's a lot of tables that we still need to put together, because they came. You know, Kirk has been, Kirk and his team, as the other principals have said, have been amazing. I really hope you all come in and look at the buildings and spaces. They have made a huge difference in just the morale of people when you walk in the building. Everything is not only clean and beautiful, but a lot of it's updated. The new Project Lead the Way curriculum is being rolled out in classrooms across, really, not just in the STEM lab, but also in the science lab with our human body. And the space looks amazing. They just cleaned it all out, put all new computers. We have all new stations, working stations, that are going to be set up over the next couple weeks. We have full enrollment in those classes of, you know, 18 to 20 students already in these new classes. Wait lists of students waiting. Just really exciting things happening in that realm, which we're really happy about and grateful for, to the community for supporting that, and the teachers who spent a lot of time. For Project Lead the Way, they had to do 80 hours of training per class, and we had four new classes. So they spent, two teachers each spent 160 hours each minimally. That's what on paper they spent, but way more than that, really preparing and learning and understanding the curriculum to make sure that these courses are as effective and, you know, in place as possible for the kids. So we're very excited about that. We have several new staff members, which, we have veteran staff members who I think have been fueled by the new staff members, as have I, because we have amazing staff who have been here for a long time. But it's always that great energy when you have new people come in and really realize like how special Rockport is, and say that to you, like, I've been in a lot of other places, and this is such a unique place. The kids are great. The programming's great. The teachers are great, the administrators. So that's been, I think, a nice boost for all of us and something that I hope will continue to inspire. Amanda King, the assistant principal, and I have been working on ways to really, she's building a calendar so that the teachers can get into other teachers' classrooms and just try to keep that going, because we can't be everywhere. But they have a lot of great ideas happening and a lot of good energy. We have a new chem teacher who's also teaching AP Physics 2 that Anna's in. So she's piloting that for the first time. Just great, great energy. And I had to add Quirks Castle in there, too, because that's what she likes to call the new reception desk when you walk in. So when you come in the door, the new check-in system, everybody's been a little bit like trying to figure it all out, but I think it's going to work out really well in terms of just streamlining, you know, who's coming in the building, where are they going, what are we doing, how are we managing that? And it's actually been kind of nice to have her there, just for the flow of traffic and with lunches. And, you know, there's, there's more presence. And we also have a lot more cameras up, which at first I was like, ooh, this is going to be a little interesting for the kids to walk in the main office and see sort of cameras. But as I said to them in the opening assembly, you know, nobody's sitting there looking for you to do wrong. Like, that's not what they're for. But it is really helpful, you know, where one, one or two administrators, we can't be, you know, we're in the lunchroom, you know, the bathroom's everywhere. So it's really nice to get kind of feel of traffic and safety, quick eye when you walk in that door. So that's been a really nice upgrade, too. I think that's.
So are the monitors for those in that reception box, or are they in your?
So we've always had them on our computers. Like, we could see when you checked in, Connie could see. Like, we could see when you checked in, Connie could see who was checking in, and then also the other cameras from around the building. We've now made it put a visible screen up when you walk in the main office or when you check in with Julia, so that everybody can see it. It's not really a secret. It's just sort of like, and it's not really zoomed in on one thing, but you can kind of see the whole school. You can see the different hallways, you can see the kids coming and going. You know, Connie'd be like, oh, I know where you are, I know you're in the E wing because I see you walking down the hall. So it's, again, just a little bit more of an easy way to kind of see what's going on in the building at all times.
Let's dive into some of our safety and security upgrades too. There's a lot of research around transparency when you're talking about safety and security and just, you know, you walk into a store nowadays and you see, they're, they're very transparent about how, how they're monitoring and how they're trying to keep everybody safe. And public schools are just trying to play catch up a little bit. But Julia's spot is awesome to watch kids come back and forth and adults going in and out. And she also has a monitor down there. So I think.
The kids thing gets funny. They'll come in and be like, where can we, oh wait, I can see myself.
Yeah, and I think once we figure out, no pun intended, once we figure out the quirks between communicating between the front and the, and the two offices, I think we're going to be in really good shape as far as feeling good about providing us with a safe and secure environment.
And we have a new administrative assistant started at the end of last year in the guidance office. And last year, I think I highlighted that that was a new space last year. That did get new carpet this year and new paint. And we have a new administrative assistant there. So that, that's always the busy hub like this time of year, especially with schedule changes and students in and out. I think yesterday Ruth had said they had made, you know, seen 150 out of the 275 in the high school, so, or 250 in the high school. So there's, you know, a lot of ebb and flow and change, but for the most part, I think we're on track to have the kids' schedules set and ready to go by Friday at the latest.
Excellent. Questions?
Thank you.
I was going to ask you and Amy, did Jeff mention the enrollment? Do you know what the enrollment is right now at high school?
I believe it's around 225.
And do you know what the enrollment is?
278.
And yours goes up by a kid every day.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. It's always nice to hear how the first week has been going. So we've been talking about Luna, and it looks like the next item is the comfort dog program.
So in your correspondence, yeah, in your correspondence section. Turn my mic on. In your correspondence folder, you'll see a couple of things. You'll see a general order that the chief has sent to me, just to kind of codify the program that you had approved last year. So that's in there now.
Are we allowed to excuse our principals who might want to go home and rest and get a good night's sleep?
I did tell them that was why we moved them in the agenda.
I'm just thinking, I wouldn't have the courage to get up, but I would want to. Thank you all for coming. So nice to see you.
Thank you. Just assumed they were leaving without me telling them. Bye. So that's in there for your review. It basically just outlines all of the information that we had already been presented last year at this time when the chief and Officer Anderson were presenting the concept of the comfort dog. This is the second district I've been involved in that's had this kind of a program. And it sounds, you know, like a lot of fluff conversation, and I'm telling you, it's just not. It's so wonderful to watch. And people who don't want to engage, don't engage, and people who do, do. And the dog is incredibly well-trained to manage strangely the social, emotional needs of human beings and kind of integrates into the school day. It's, it's really fascinating to watch. And so I just think it's added a really nice feel to the campus. Also, in your correspondence section, you will see the email reply that I sent to Savannah and Mr. Hopkins in respect to GSA and RED. So I just wanted you to know that we did follow up as a district on that as well. And you actually met Mr. O'Brien tonight, who's the advisor of that organization. So that is in there just for your review. And, oh, Amy left. I was going to let her do the commercial on this, but that's okay.
That's why.
Sorry. I knew there was a reason to keep her, but I'll do it. So also in there for your review, we have the NIASC letter. If you recall, we had asked permission to reach out to NIASC to ask to postpone our accreditation cycle, knowing that we're going to stick back to a six to 12 model. So NIASC has graciously allowed us to postpone that timeline. We'll make our transition to a six to 12 school next year, and then we'll start to do the deep dive into the self-assessment work and ultimately go back on cycle with the NIASC accreditation. So we're not by any means the first school to ask for this kind of relief, and that has been approved as well.
Mark, can I add, because it wasn't evident in the photos, Luna the comfort dog has a sporty vest and badge that they wear. Wouldn't be any more adorable.
I wonder if Luna would ever like to come and sit in on a meeting with us. I think we would be comforted.
I'm sure she would visit.
I think the other thing that I was picking up tonight, we've had three principals inviting us in the most polite way to come take a tour. I think we should go take a tour.
So Amy's already got one on the books. So all you have to do is send me a quick email. I'll tell you when I'm free. And the way we're going to work it is I'll take you around, we'll meet with each principal, pop in and out of some classrooms, pop in and out of hallways and new spaces. Even if you've had students in the schools, I think it's worth you coming in and seeing the changes and seeing the new faces and watching kids. And I, and I think the staff would really feel supported by you all knowing that you're coming in to get a good view of, of the work, so.
Would it be helpful if we arranged for maybe like two of us to come together so you're not doing four different?
I don't mind doing it separately. I actually, I just don't want to overwhelm, because you're talking about a superintendent and a principal and a school committee member already coming into a classroom. So if you add a fourth power adult.
So you would rather just have us all.
Yeah, I think so.
Which I, I, I get what you're saying, but I want, I had a note actually to talk to in our school committee discussion about this topic since we're talking about now. Last year, I mentioned an idea maybe about bringing in select board members and FinCom to also do the same.
I think during the budget cycle, that'd be perfect.
You know, just exactly as I said, to showcase all the things happening, all the upgrades and the changes. So I was going to say the same thing is whether that should be paired up or, or those done separately as well. But I think it would be a great idea to offer invitations.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Groups as well.
Yeah. So you and I could talk about how to get that done.
I think it would be great to pair one of us with whatever members of those groups come in, because sometimes it's great to remind them that there's a formal body that oversees the schools.
Yep, yeah. Might be absolutely, especially once we kind of start cranking through the budget season to, to get some, some value added out of those visits. That'd be nice. So that's all I have for correspondence, Mr. Chair. We have.
Personnel?
No personnel this evening.
No personnel? Well, that would bring us to Chair of the Success, an Anadrosa inaugural speech making.
Go ahead, you're up.
Hi, my name is Anna Drost. I will be the student representative tonight. Since school has just really started, I don't have many updates, but I will for future meetings. I just wanted to say that I believe that it's been a pretty easy transition to school this year, at least I know for me. I woke up feeling excited to go on the first day of school, which hasn't always been my experience in middle school and entry school, but it was for this year and I was very excited about that. And I'm looking forward to what this year has in store for all of us.
Excellent. Did you go on the boat ride?
Yeah, I went on the boat ride and it was pretty cool. The seas were a little rougher than I expected, but it was nice.
Okay.
So I was going to ask, you're a senior?
Yes, I'm a senior.
So as someone who did not grow up in a coastal community, I agree with you. I was, I didn't really have my sea legs there, so, but I, I.
And can you answer one question for me? In my experience, I've had two or three of these experiences, when the dance floor looks a little empty, some parents rush out there to take it over, did that also happen?
There were definitely some parents out there, but there were a lot of kids, which surprised me. They were more ambitious than I were and were able to go out there and dance.
Thank you. Well, that's great. Thank you. And you're out, you're also, if you like, you can stay certainly, but if you probably have homework to do and other things like that, you're welcome to, to leave at this point too.
So it's always up to you. If you've got tons of homework and you want to get out of here any night, you go. If you want to stay and be part of the, part of the team, you stay with us. We leave it up to you.
I've done most of my homework, so I'm going to stay tight.
Well, we know your dad is really interested in this next item. Policies Subcommittee Report.
So, Mr. Chair, the Policy Subcommittee met this evening, and Chairman Lorenz will give us a progress update on how that meeting went, and then we'll talk through the next steps after that.
Yeah, so the Policy Subcommittee met earlier this afternoon along with Alicia Melon from MASC, the representative. We reviewed two policies this afternoon, Section C, which is regarding school management and administration. And then we also reviewed Section F, which was regarding facilities. So we made it through those two sections, which was great. We will have those available next meeting, the 20th, I believe, for a first read is the plan on those. And then our next section, I believe, is Section D, the financial section, which we updated a couple, two years ago, but I think it's a big section and that's probably going to take some time to work through that one too. So that's, that's what we did, and that's our plan going forward.
And are you finding in your work with the MASC rep as well, do the changes you're seeing, do they fall into major categories? Is it mostly squaring them up against state policy that's drifted, or is it about best practices as opposed to sort of tailor-made small districts?
It's kind of a combination of both. I feel like there's some, you guys can jump in, but some of the policies are, are rock poor policies that we're just tweaking some of the language.
Sure.
And then some of the policies are, were recommending updates to the full MASC policies because those have just been vetted by other districts and other groups and already aligned with MASC general law or whatnot. So it's kind of a combination of those two things.
The only thing I would add, I think, would be that there are some policies that we will suggest go away. We found some policies that looked more like practices. They looked like things maybe that don't need to be in a policy manual because they exist in other places. So you'll see some of our recommendations are for things to simply go away. And I think we were careful to make sure we don't make something go away and have it disappear, right? We made sure it appears somewhere else. Sometimes something's redundant or it simply doesn't fall under the category of policy. It's more like a procedure.
And Alicia's been really good about stepping us through those differences. Some, some of the changes have been grammatical, some of them have been fully overarching changes. In your folder, instead of the folder systems, which I'll take away after tonight, you get that, this one clean doc, and this is now going to be your running table of contents. So if you've played with this, the, the hope here is this makes it super accessible for you, so you can see the status spreadsheet that MASC will give to us after every meeting, telling us where we are in the updates. Then you'll see the Section A with changes, the notes that they've taken us through, and then you'll see the clean versions. So every time we go through a first and a second read, we're going to be taking a look at the clean versions ultimately and going hopefully with the recommendation of the Subcommittee at that point. There'll be some, as you can see tonight, that we will table because we, we need more information. One, you know, my, you're waiting on a communication plan update for me, so there's one that's waiting there. When we get to curriculum, the health frameworks are about to get totally updated within the next couple of months and dropped on us, so there are going to be some changes to some policies related to health and wellness. So with the exception of maybe two or three per section, I think we're going to be in really good shape to move along.
You probably mentioned it at our last school committee meeting in the overview, but with, on each policy, Alicia has put her recommendations for acceptance or changes, but kind of what you were asking about. And so those head, those are the headings in blue, and those, to me, are really a great place to start with reading to, to see why we're recommending the changes, yeah.
So I just popped one up just so people can see what, what we're looking at. So you've got the blue changes, you've got the strike-throughs, we've got notes, and then the Subcommittee has the daunting task of going through each document one by one with, with our consultant to make the final decisions for recommendations to your team.
One thing that strikes me is that the content doesn't really change. The pronouns change, the orders of the paragraph might change. Sometimes things are more coherent, but I don't feel like we have a single policy that is something new, brand new, that wasn't there before, nor do I think anything critical has suddenly disappeared. I think this is really cleaning and tidying things up.
And it'll give us a really nice baseline moving forward. You know, we'll have a baseline of 2023, everything updated in the same time, and then we can go back to a more traditional review. And MASC will continue to host us and give us updates throughout the years when something changes, so that historically, great people, we've talked about this, but we'll talk about it now because someone's here. We've, historically, you've got great people who sit on these committees who just do that work. They're either, as my friend calls them, policy wonks, or they're just people who are good people trying to do their best work, but you're always at the mercy of who's doing that work. And to run a school district, a larger organization with policies vetted this way one time through is going to make us really feel solid and give us good footing. So I appreciate the work of the committee, and Alicia's been great coming out in, in as our rep, so.
The only other thing I can think of to add is we'll go section by section, remember, and then at the end, we'll be all done, but none of the changes that we do a first or second read take effect until everything is done at the end. Is that right? Yeah, okay.
So it sounds like what I'm intuiting is not too hard in Intuit, that there's been great value added by Alicia in terms of supporting, yeah.
We're getting our money's worth, is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Great. And it sounds also like you probably haven't hit the sections. We had a lot of tweaking during the COVID years. Be interesting to see how that's reviewed and altered.
Yeah, I think we've chipped, I think we've chipped away at the less painful ones first, which might not have been as smart a thing to do, but that's how we're attacking them. So, so in the second agenda item here would be a first, and a first read of Sections A and B, and you'll see three exceptions, as we said earlier, those are three that aren't old.
I think that's a typo on the section nine, just to, I think it was B, BDC.
Thank you.
No way. Eight, no, sorry, ADC, I believe.
ADC.
Just make sure.
Fat fingers.
Was it ADC?
I have ADC, BEDH, and BHD.
No one ever saw it.
Okay, so any questions for the Subcommittee? This is just a first read, so.
Thank you for all your work.
I thought, thank you for all your work, and I also thought it was really helpful to be able to see all the strike-throughs and all the, you know, kind of the notes about it to see. And I'm sure when you get, we get to the more sort of in-depth, like the ones where there might be more changes, that will be really helpful because it kind of took us through your process even though we weren't there. So thank you for that, for your work.
Excellent. So like, yeah?
So I actually, out of the fear factor, I read through, I actually read through these. So with the ACE, it talks about Title II ADA coordinator. Like in one of the other places, they actually named the coordinator that was running, are you going to put, are we going to put an ADA coordinator, Title II ADA coordinator listed in this one?
Which policy are you talking about?
ACE.
So I believe that was one of the updates, that if the best practice is to put the name in, then we put Martha's name in, for example, if the best.
She was in an earlier one, yeah.
Right. And if the best practice is just to put the title, because people change and then you don't want to have to go through your policies. It's just similar to why we don't name curriculum products in our documents either. So I'll, I will, I will ask her to make sure we're being consistent across the board.
Yeah, because she is named in the earlier one, but she's not named in ACE.
I'll go back and check in with her tonight.
All right, so I guess I would be looking for a motion to accept the clean versions that we have in our files of a first read of Sections A and B exclusive of Policies ADC, BEDH, and BHD.
I will make that motion.
I will second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no unfinished business.
So we actually do, I'm throwing your curve ball if that's okay, if you don't mind.
We actually have some unfinished business.
This is a late entry and it's regarding YRBS, so I know the committee is interested. So I've been in communication with Jesse Palm and Chelsea Goldstein Walsh. So at our October fifth District Leadership Team, we're gonna combine the Principal's Assistant Principal, Counseling Team and myself and Director of Student Services. And those two leaders, Jesse and Chelsea, are going to come and meet with us on October fifth. And they're gonna give us the YRBS preview and analysis, as we had talked about at one of our last meetings. And then once we finish with that, those two people will step us through the best practice way to then carefully present that to the public through the School Committee. And I would expect that will happen before the holiday break in December, provided the timeline works out.
And I'm sorry, just for.
Youth Risk Behavior Service.
I, I know what it is, but when was it administered? Pre-COVID?
Pre-COVID, yeah. It was right after, it was before I got here, so I, it was right after.
Right after.
Yeah. And this was the first time this district's ever administered it.
And so the data are now two years old, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
And would we maybe through the chair invite members of the Board of Health to? To our meeting, to?
That was the.
To, um, to hear the, the presentation grade.
Was that October fifth or after October?
After October. So the internal meeting, yeah, the internal meeting is October fifth with the leadership team and the counseling team. And then Jesse and Chelsea will meet with with the internal team to help us develop an appropriate public presentation that doesn't break any HIPAA violations or anything else that we're looking at. So that's how it's been done in the previous places where that, but to your point, yes, it's, unfortunately, it's, it is, the data's, it's at, now we pick the ball up. And whenever the YRBS comes out the second time, at least we've got a benchmark, which is all I can ask for at this point.
So do you have a feel mark for how long a process it is post-ten-five?
I'd like to get it on the agenda at a November meeting, if that's possible, but I'll.
Yeah, because November, by the end, starts to get choppy.
Yep. So my hope would be two meetings later. I'll, I'll be able to tell you after the fifth.
Okay, that's great. We just want to give them a heads up so that. And Nicole, do you, well, I guess we can let them know that it's coming. We haven't forgotten because I know that becomes a topic of concern for them at times.
I'm happy to do that with Mary Beth, our liaison.
It's coming.
Okay.
Teacher Rubric Pilot.
So this is exciting, at least I find it exciting. DESI is coming out with updated classroom teacher evaluation rubrics that they are piloting in districts this year. This has been a couple of years in the making at the state level. And sometime last winter or spring, they were looking for districts to volunteer to pilot. And you have to have an MOA and a relationship with your union that allows that to happen. I did put in an application to be selected as one of the sixteen or twenty districts who will pilot this across the Commonwealth. We were selected, which is fantastic. A lot of times, the smaller districts don't get to participate in pilots just because it becomes a capacity issue and it's, they get more data sometimes with the bigger cities. But in this particular case, I think they're really trying to differentiate the types of communities that are piloting the work. So the pilot is really for the evaluators. So the way this works is the, the team of principals, assistant principals, and director of people, of student services, who are the ones who directly evaluate the educators, they're going to go through a pilot and some training through DESI on the new teacher rubrics. And if you look at the bottom bold in the first box, the biggest change is we're integrating and strengthening culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. That's all embedded in there around that culture of belonging, work that we've been doing across the state and around being having culturally consistent classrooms with differentiation that's based on meeting the needs of kids individually. And so that's a hard thing to capture in a rubric, quite honestly, when it comes to instructional practices. So the training is really around those of us who evaluate teachers. The pilot comes into play and that's why the Chair has signed an MOA on your behalf, along with our two union presidents, to allow us to do this work in partnership with them. And what we will do is when the principals or the assistant principals go in and it, and do the walkthroughs and the observations, they're going to use the new tool, but it will not be an evaluative tool. The, the sections of the rubric that are new will not be used for evaluative purposes. They will only be used to collect data and give feedback to DESI so that we can continue to grow in this area. There's also, if you take a look at the second slide, I know it's tough to read, but you have it in your drive, too. There's what's called a Community of Practice Opportunity that our teachers can sign up for. They can get professional development points towards column movement. It's after-school hours. And these are across the Commonwealth. They're, they're trying to get teachers to participate in these community practices so they learn structures and strategies and instructional moves that will help them strengthen themselves in these areas. So my hope is that we'll have anywhere between five and ten and fifteen teachers who participate in the community practice. Our whole evaluation team is participating in the practice as well. And we'll be really poised when these rubrics drop in a year. We'll be in a position that many, many, many other school districts are not in. We'll be a whole year ahead of everybody. We would have been part of the feedback loop. And so when I came into the district, that was one of the things I remember talking about with you all was partnerships and reaching out. And this is just another opportunity for us to partner with DESI and to partner in community of practices with other districts. And all of the leaders in these sixteen to twenty school districts will be participating in these optic training sessions that are online and in person. So excited to do this. A public thank you to the union, to Joanne Hildreth and Stacy Twombly, who are the co-presidents, for agreeing to, to say yes and allow us to do this work. Any questions about this one?
It'll be all three schools with all administr, anybody who's doing evaluation.
Anybody who evaluates teachers, yeah.
Formative, summative.
Yeah, the whole thing. It's really focused on the observation and the feedback loop first. That's my guess is we're gonna hit that first.
Is the feedback loop, is that changing much? Do you know? Or do you know how that's changing?
Oh, well, I shouldn't say no definitively. To my knowledge, it's not changing. You never know. To my knowledge, it's not changing. What's most important is the, the instructional practices focused more on culturally linguistic practices, just making sure that we're meeting the needs of our diverse learners. And that's, that's a major shift already.
I think it's great for Rockport's voice to be in the room with this kind of a conversation. Great for administrators to see it early on and great for teachers to get to feel it as well. Will this take an enormous amount of time from administrators who are probably already pretty busy?
Not, not the way Joanne and Stacy and I agreed to the MOA. So the, the focus was instead of soliciting volunteer teachers, we made it really clear that all of the data is anonymous. So when we turn it into DESI, so they can really get a twofer, as my coach likes to say. So basically, if they're going to do an observation anyway, they do the observation and they collect additional feedback.
That's great. Thank you.
Good. So the second piece, we've, we're really, really trying to calibrate. You know, we've got a second-year principal at the elementary school, a second-year assistant principal at the elementary school, two first-year assistant principals at the middle and high school. While they're veteran educators, they're new to that role. Jeff's been around the block a few years, but he's new to Massachusetts. And Amy Rose is a student in a sponge who just loves to learn. So that's kind of the, the makeup of the leadership team that does the evaluation process. So I've really dug in with them to say we really want to calibrate what our look-for's are, calibrate how we're giving feedback to teachers. This is not necessarily done well in a lot of organizations. This is not just true about education, but in a lot of cases, you don't see evaluators or supervisors calibrate across the company to make sure they're giving consistent, similar feedback methods to, to their staff. And that's what we would really want to make sure. So someday, it shouldn't matter who observed you if we've trained ourselves up on the appropriate look-for's and what we're looking for in student engagement and activities and meeting the needs of all learners. So we've contracted with Rebus Associates, which is Bill Rebus's company. I've known Bill for a while. I reconnected with him at the Cape this July. And he is, I've contracted with Bill's company to have Dr. Bill Lapini come in. He is a retired superintendent, was in Beverly Brookline and finished at Essex Tech before jumping over the border in retirement to New Hampshire. And so Bill is coming down to do two sessions with the evaluators in September and then two more in October. And these are the two books that, that we are relying on. We used these books last year. And I sort of led some unofficial professional development with the team just to make sure. I felt confident that we were getting calibrated, but to have a third-party set of eyes on it is important. And I, I, I can't stress the importance of making sure we're still providing professional development to our leadership team as well. We focus a lot on teacher professional development as we should, but we have to remember that the educational leaders need to continue to grow as well. So these two initiatives between the pilot and working with Bill's company would, should really set us up to, to strengthen the instructional practices in the school and give teachers confident feedback to make them better as they, as they go. Any thoughts on that?
I would imagine that's being well-received because that has been an area that we haven't been able to expend many resources on.
Right, right. Yeah. And again, Stacey and Joanne were, you know, really amenable to us doing this. They thanked me and understood why we're doing it. So I think it's, you know, in partnership with the union, all of this stuff is gonna work really nicely.
Finance.
We have. I don't think we have a lot on finance tonight, correct?
No finance. Mark, I knew.
No finance. No finance. Everything is just continuing as it was reported last time. Town's still going along, trying to wrap up last year. And then we'll be reporting on that data to the state and then giving you a final look in the two formats that we agreed to last year.
Do you have an understanding of what the town's timeline is for that?
Unfortunately, no.
I don't know the answer. I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I don't have a timeline. Yeah, it, it's, they're under a crunch as well. Yeah.
We have Fall Town Meeting coming up, but that's more.
We will not be mentioned at Fall Town Meeting. That is always my goal. Unless they bring up anything to do with our playground if they have to. And that's just a procedural.
Right.
Vote. If they've changed the dollar amount in any way, they would have to revote. But again, that's, that's on the town's end for procedure and not us.
Excellent. Now, Mark, I know we kind of stole your thunder by introducing the topic that you were gonna introduce earlier for additional school committee discussion.
Oh, no, I think we covered it. I think we're good. Yeah, I think it's great. Thank you for coming back. Yeah.
Any other walk-on items?
I just need to make sure I understand. We all go to town meeting together on Monday night? Or we don't to help?
So.
What's the protocol for school committee?
Historically, it's the Spring Town Meeting where our budget can be called into question and defended.
I saw you all there in the front row for nine hours. It was very impressive.
Not all of us, I'm afraid, but Fall Town Meeting tends to be housekeeping where amounts that were projected now are trued up. So we're all welcome to go in different years.
But we're not in session doing that formal thing? Okay. Thank you very much.
And town meeting is one of the exceptions where we don't have to post it. We don't have to announce if we're all going.
Okay.
Specifically exempted. Is there a need for executive session?
There is not.
There is not. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.